...on the agenda tonight, so I'm gonna go a little bit out of order. Which one did you say is?
Number one.
Number one, okay.
Christine Albrecht.
Christine Albrecht, yes.
You're on first on the agenda, do you want to kind of explain what you're asking, Council?
Yes, what I'm asking for is I own and operate a, like a hot dog vending mobile food cart. I'm interested in setting up on the corner of Depot and Lincolnian Street across from the right aid at the bus stop, one day a week on Thursday from 10 to about 3 o'clock, selling food to the public. There should be a package, I don't know if you received them, okay. Do we have an ordinance?
Yeah.
I thought we had this conversation before.
We did, about a food truck on the park by the hospital.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Chapter 85, which is the Streets and Sidewalks section, Section 2, no person shall use any of the streets or public alleys in Latrobe for the conduct of any commercial or business activity that is normally conducted upon private property.
So, we have an ordinance basically that doesn't allow it.
Right.
Now, we're allowed to have waivers, but for special events, so that's why we can do like...
Advanced, but not special.
Yeah. So, because this isn't a land use code, we don't have variances or things of that nature, we just have the waiver provision, so if Council wanted to entertain that property, we would have to amend Chapter 85.
Question for you, Zach.
Yeah.
Say she got approval from a private business.
To do it in like a private parking lot?
Yes. Is that allowed?
Yeah.
Yes.
She's on private property, there's no problem.
Okay. That might help you out a little bit?
Yes. They would have a private parking lot.
Uh, right aid?
Oh, so that, okay, that would be there, scratch. So you could bump it back just a little, like...
Yeah, it would just have to be off the right of line.
Okay, then I'd have to probably contact their forecourt office.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So, I'm gonna, we're gonna skip, you're actually not on the agenda, but we're gonna put you up here. The Park and Rec folks are here to talk to us about their future plans, so whoever would like to speak, if you might, all of you, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, so everybody knows who you are.
I'll do the speaking, but I'm Tom Long, I'm Vice President of the Park and Rec Commission.
Craig Shevchuk, the Director.
I'm Sue Mainz, I'm the Chairperson of the Commission.
Bruce Jones in charge of Facilities.
Thanks, guys. Tom, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Rosie Mayor and Council. Number one, I'd like to thank you all for everything you do for Park and Rec. We do greatly appreciate it. Sometimes you guys don't hear that, I know sometimes we don't hear that, but we do appreciate what you do. I wanted to also recognize what Craig and his team does. You take a look at the parks and see everything, and all the programs and things like that that we have, it's, they do a fantastic job with very little resources. What I wanted to talk to you about tonight is, our Park and Rec Commission has been working diligently on what to do with this deck hockey investment. We've looked at a number of different things, we've looked at different locations, we've looked at programming, and all kinds of planning, so we think we have put together a plan that can work best for everybody. As you know, this past season we did, our park and, our deck hockey was held out at Davis Peach Park out of Twin Lakes. Craig had a lot of positive feedback from that. Our participation was very minimal drop-off, we had a lot of, a lot of people participate, not too many people not participate. The commute out to there is a very short commute, plenty of parking. What we're looking to do is, maybe one of our solutions is to partner with Westmoreland Parks and use their facility for deck hockey moving forward. We would like to use their facility. Westmoreland Parks are on board, they will provide bleachers, they're gonna provide a facility for credit to keep equipment, even run a mini pro shop. I think it's a great way of two parks working together, plus there's a great opportunity for more participation. I mean, they have a large footprint, we have a large footprint, so it could be very, it's a very positive to our program that we're looking at. With that said, we've asked Craig to do some research on our facilities, enhancements, and things that we can improve upon by using this investment of the deck hockey, and I'm gonna ask Craig to come up and speak about that.
One question I have for you.
Sure.
Are there any, at the current facility now, are there any other organized deck hockey?
No.
So, we would be the only one?
We would be the only one, and they would keep it that way.
Yeah, well, that's it, then that'd give us priority on scheduling and all that.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Okay, Council, thank you for your time, I'm just gonna continue with Tom Long's. So, what our plan is, we would like to do is apply for a DCNR grant in April, using the $200,000 that you guys hold now as a match. I do have, if I could approach and hand out these, it's kind of our plan, some of the projects that we would like to do. This isn't written in stone, but these are just some of the areas that we would like to enhance and improve. All these are current parks or playgrounds or walking paths that we currently maintain. And again, we're looking to enhance the safety and quality of some of these facilities that actually haven't been touched in quite some years. And the first one would be on our agenda, would be the Memorial Playground, Urban Avenue, that came up when we were putting, thinking about putting the deck hockey in over there. You can see the scope of the work would be actually take out some of the current playground equipment that is outdated, swing set and the multi-use play structure. So, replace that, the safety surfacing, resealing and striping the basketball court, which hasn't been done in quite some time, fix the fencing, again, for safety for the children, powder wash, you paint the pavilion, replace the bathroom doors and opening up the entrance way so they are accessible, ADA accessible, and then we'd also like to add a curb cut and pedestrian walkway across Urban Avenue to make it safer for anybody that wants to use it. So, our second project, these are sort of, these are in order, would be the Legion Keener Parking Lot. Everybody knows Legion Keener, you've been down there, the parking lot is in bad shape. And, you know, with the Fourth of July, the car shows that we hold down there, we're gonna have a car show coming up this weekend, Coons puts it on, and there's over 200 cars there, 1,000 people come down there, Latrobe Football uses at the park, Little League, softball leagues, our farmer's market, so that really needs to be done again, anybody that goes down there for the safety and striping the parking lot also. Legion Keener path, just like Lincoln, Legion Keener path, every morning, if you're here early, you know it's being used by hundreds and hundreds of people, all, all time. Kids, adults, jogging, walking, so, but we have been doing a good job of getting the geese and stop using it this year too, if anybody has noticed, it is cleaner now. So, that would be another project, because there are some areas that need to be cut out and replaced because of the roots or the settling of the, of the land. Legion Keener tennis courts, again, people don't realize how much they're used, we host a tennis tournament, Special Olympics comes in, they've been using them the last couple of years, and then this daily drop-in, our tennis lessons, but again, I believe it's about 2,000, they were replaced, and so they're way overdue of, again, cracks, and it's just time for those to be replaced and resurfaced. Again, that same complex, the same volleyball courts, they were redone back in 2002, and there hasn't been any sand added to those courts since 2002. So, you know, 15 years of wind and rain and kids making sand castles and playing, dispersed the sand, so we need to add that, re-edge it, and just clean it up. Also, we would like to go ahead and revamp the four baseball fields down at Legion Keener Park, Little League, the Legion Field, and the two softball fields down there. Laser grade it, add infield mix, and really enhance those again, a lot of that, they haven't had any dirt or infield soil added to those for a long time. First Ward, we'd like to go over there, there is trees that are hanging over on the sidewalk from that park, again, a safety issue that we need to get taken care of, re-seal the basketball courts, anytime over the summer, if you drive by that park, people are playing basketball, and again, those need to be redone. Also, the main structure of that playground needs to be taken out and replaced, and then add more safety surfacing. And then we'd like to do some work on the First Ward Baseball Field again, grading it and putting infield mix in and redoing the bases, and possibly updating the bathroom. So, these are some of the projects we would like to do, we feel confident in application to DCNR, especially with the cash in hand. And again, we just think it would enhance the quality of life in Latrobe. Anybody have any questions?
When you write, you've spoke with these companies, have you gone so far as to get estimates, or?
Some I have, yes, some haven't got back to me, yes. I do have rough estimates. Again, when you apply for a DCNR grant, apply in April, hopefully we get awarded in October, and the time you can actually do, you start your project, would probably be June of, spring of '19, so.
Question, sorry, another question, go ahead. So, if we rent the facilities over at Twin Lakes, will the participants' fees cover those costs, like that'll, you won't give monies for that as well?
No, I won't give monies in that, that would just be a budget concern for me, and hopefully, the way it works is being out there, essentially located, there's more opportunity for growth, because it is a lot easier to get, get to, you also are right there on Hemfield Township, Unity Township, and also Brainsburg, so there's more to pull from.
Craig, I'd be interested to see the bid for the paving of the parking lot down there, I think that's gonna be a lot of money.
Yeah, I have actually a bid from AMS, and it's $79,000.
That's Westmoreland Park?
Me too.
So, you're saying all of this list could be covered with $400,000?
Correct.
That's what you were estimating?
Yes.
And as far as First Ward goes, the grading, the field and cut infield tips for the baseball field over on First Ward?
Correct.
Right now, it gets, it's underwater half the time, so...
Correct.
Is that what would eliminate that?
Yes, that would eliminate that, that's because of lack of infield mix and a lack of actually grading it out.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? And again, this is just a list, this isn't written in stone, we would be more than happy to listen to any ideas that you might have, but we would really like to invest that money into our park system, which is one of the things that, you know, people enjoy, people move here, brings people into town and use the businesses.
So, I guess one other question would be, I mean, I would, I would assume, I'm not on the board, so I haven't seen finances, but any program that you run is a revenue generator, right? So, you pay all your expenses for that program, but it also provides some additional revenue to the overall Park and Rec. So, by renting a place to have deck hockey, does that eliminate the profit margin? I mean, will there still be a margin from that program?
Yeah, there'll still be a margin, obviously, that will eat in to our, our revenue. So, as, as a group and as a leader, we need to look in how we generate more revenue and...
But you're, but you're not, but you're not going in the red with that program?
Correct.
Even by renting, you're still making money?
Yes.
It's not as much money?
Yes, that's Rosie, yes. Our, our program is strong, we hope even grow it, being out there, yes.
Yeah, so you could, that alone could increase the margin just by bringing more people in?
Correct.
Without...
No, no money for lights up there.
Well, I'm always willing to listen, Councilwoman Ballmer.
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
So, this needs our approval, since we had stipulated with the...
Well, Resolution 2016-5, number one, required the funds to be expended on her before January 8, 2008, or January 1, 2018, so that item would have to be addressed, and in the resolution, we might have been a little restrictive in what it could have been used for, I mean, arguably, you read it, and it could be a very broad application, but I would suggest a resolution amending this 2016-5, lengthening the time component as well as broadening the scope of what the funds can be used for.
And again, we would see invoices before anything would be paid out.
Correct. Actually, we worked with the city with the Lincoln grant, and if that's the way the process would move on to, I could submit all the bids and all the invoices to the city, and they could be paid out of that, and the great money could also be put in through their account.
And we might want to include in a resolution, and we would probably have to co-sign off on the grant anyway.
Okay, I have a question. I don't want to ask this question, but I have to ask, so what if we don't get the grant?
That's a good, I don't have an answer to that.
Have to prioritize.
Then, then we would, so we would, we could still do some avenues, perhaps?
Yes, you could still do a lot of these on our own, yes.
Okay.
But you're talking about a chance to double your money.
Right, 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 well, yeah, it makes a lot of sense to apply for the grant.
Correct. And I've, I've talked to Adam Mattis, who's our DCNR representative in this area, and he feels pretty confident, you know, especially with the money already in the bank, and for us applying before and the scope of the work, he feels pretty confident that even if we didn't get it all, he would be able to, we'd be able to receive something, you know, they might say, hey, we only can give you $100,000 or $75,000 to do this project or that project, and then we can actually reapply in the following years.
Okay, so we can vote on that at the September meeting?
Sure.
The resolution. I just want to thank you guys, I know that a lot of time and effort and energy was spent trying to figure out what was in the best interest of the community as a whole, and I think this, this option will really probably impact, well, definitely will impact a larger portion of the community even than, than just what, you know, the deck hockey was gonna do, and we still have deck hockey, and so I think it's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, go ahead, what's next?
The, what department was it?
Police, it was DUI prepared grant.
The, the way that the resolution was drafted in June, for the DUI Task Force authorized the mayor to execute all the documents, things of that nature, it's been brought to our attention that, given the day-to-day operations of it, it'd be more appropriate to have the city manager being the authorized person, so they're requiring us to amend that June resolution to reflect that.
Who's that?
DUI, they would have a state grant, that's state, right?
It's federally funded through the state of Pennsylvania.
Actually, it's where, what we're doing is the resolution will look like the resolution the year before, we're just getting it back to where it was originally, that's all. They, when we went to submit the grant, they...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just having, like, how does it work, like, I just, it's to me, it's just a red flag when we take something out of an elected official's hands and put it in.
Well, it's usually what it says is mayor or designate, so the problem with this is that I'm on the software, and therefore, they're looking for my authorization, which I did submit, but then when they match it with the resolution, it says, you're not on there, that's all. No, it's, I mean, the operations, the operations side, this is more an operational grant.
It's a pass for Lincoln.
Right, yeah, it's more, you know, they have to, Bob has to submit all the documents, I have to sign off on them, and then we get the check when they collect them, those are mine.
Okay.
They're gonna regret it somewhere. All right, next, yeah, is that?
Yes, yeah, I'm set.
I didn't mean to catch you up. Next is the approval for CDBG grant, or bids for 2017, this is gonna be put on hold. We were told today that the federal, the CDBG money is not finally approved yet, due to the federal government being a little bit crazy right now, just to general.
No figure?
No, I'm not pointing any direction, I'm just saying it's a little crazy right now, and, and so basically, we can't approve the bids because the money hasn't been officially given to the city yet.
Okay.
So, now, if in two weeks, by then, the federal money is approved, then we'll have a background on the...
So, but, but we can apply for CDB, CDBG money for 2018?
Yeah, that's next on there, and we...
I see that.
We are applying for that, and, and we're not gonna lose the money for 2017, it's just the fact that we can't. But the problem's gonna be, and my guy talked about it, the rate, we're in September, you know, but by the time they get around to approving this, you know, finally releasing the mics, it's been approved, the money's ours, it's just a matter of them finally releasing it, the authorization for it, it's gonna be October. So, we'll be, this is a 2017 grant, but we're gonna be using in 2018 anyway, because we're not gonna have time to pay it now. So, that bid that we got from Truska is probably gonna have to be rebid, so, you know, that's, there's not much, this seems to be a little confusion there, and it's not any that we could do.
Do you have to rebid the whole thing, Wade?
We may, yeah, yeah. I mean, anyway, if you were able to squeeze it in this year, no, but Truska, you're not gonna, they could not go hold the bid for a year.
Right.
You know, for six months. Price of oil, if they couldn't afford that. All right, number five, advertising, just to FYI, Mike's gonna start advertising for snow removal beds, it hasn't been bid for a number of years, and these are dead, so, he's been working on that. Number six is a sale of lot behind 1100, I've told most of you all that, we got a $10,000 offer, which I think is fair, and if the gentleman's going to take it to his board, and if they formally approve it, then Council will need to, or want to make some steps to finally sell it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll advertise it to give, you know, the rest of the public a fair opportunity to purchase it.
Where's 1100?
1100, Lincolnian, it's the radio station, Christian radio station, behind it, very small lots, it's about seven or nine meters, very small.
What piece is used?
He wants to use it for parking, and it's advantageous to him because it's recognized built. It's really not a lot of...
So, the city owns that lot right now?
Yeah, about...
Just, just a section of the street.
Yeah, it's a little piece of it owned by a land bank, and a piece of it owned by us. And it seems, it seems to be a fair price for that little lot, right? All right, last is just, again, FYI, we received the final grant payment for the Park Act loan, the contention money they were holding, which wasn't very much anyway, $25,000 out of a million.
Yeah, but we got up there on your total, right?
No, I mean, not your total, but I'm saying they helped, they withheld $25,000, which is like, not a lot of money. But anyway, we haven't received the final approval author that the audit was complete, but they sent the money, so I'm gonna assume that we're...
That was a long process, wasn't it?
Yes, extremely long, and it took a lot of effort on Barb and...
I know.
And they put a lot of time, and, and the people doing the audit have more effort to do. That's, that's me, it for me, and Jerry, you want to bring up the...
Yes.
The tower? Yeah, we need to get rid of the tower up in the graveyard.
Up in the graveyard by the water tower?
Yeah.
Why?
They wanted out.
Who's that?
Only family.
Oh, whose tower is it?
Towers, but it was, it used to be a, it used to be, yeah, they're insured, it used to be a communication tower that you, your repeater, the place used to use as a repeater, but technology's moved forward, that tower's not usable for the city, and we did get some bids, we did, we got some pretty high, we got one pretty high bid, so, we talked to Doc Sam, and he said that he wanted to take it down and use it as their, as a hand radio transmitter, but that was back in, what, October, almost a year and a half ago now?
I think he's got a plant.
No, it was last, it was last October.
Yeah.
Maybe I was here. Yeah, okay, so, almost, not quite a year ago. I haven't heard any more from them, they were gonna take it down, I can give them another call, but I, we can get some bids, but, you know, one bid we got was for a transmitter, maybe someone else even wants it, would take it down. You need a, you need a tire in your backyard, you sure?
An ordinance against that?
Yeah.
Probably. Why don't you just see what you can find out, get some more bids, updated bids, talk to Dr. Sam.
I can, I can, I talked to Dr. Sam, I talked to him a month or two ago, and he said they were still working on it.
Well, tell them they don't.
Jerry, it is on, yeah.
Cut it, put it in the restory lot.
They don't want it, it's not theirs.
Problem is, it's gonna, you know, somebody knows what they're doing, take it down, because there is some power lines around there, some trees and a few gravestones, if you need the, you know, all that.
Well, I mean, it's too expensive to take down, we're not taking it down.
Yeah, except, that's what happened last time, was it was around six grand, and it cost us, if we insured it, it was like $20 a year, so it was like...
Yeah.
You know, but we can get another bid, I mean, I was surprised, it's a metal tire, and I thought we'd get it at a price, but it's crap. Go ahead, give me a fine look. I don't know if it's steel or aluminum, unless you want to talk to my...
Steel.
Steel, yeah. I will check again.
I...
It's a work on.
I just want to thank Chief Brazilly and Mike and the Public Works Department and Officer Dirk on behalf of all the policemen. We had a great Nan Flit Festival this weekend, lots and lots of people in town, I'm sure you had some issues, but they didn't get highly publicized, so you guys did a good job of keeping things under control, even with the bridge, I think we had a pretty good turnout. Did you guys run into any major problems?
I, I had one yesterday.
Oh, did you?
One of the vendors dumped a truck, called in, in all buildings, the dumpster behind 333 Main Street.
Oh, jeez.
So, I went and put it out without making too much of a ruckus, so...
Yeah, I did hear we had some issues up there too. Bob, did you run into anything?
Not during the first hundred miles, anything serious that happened?
Mike?
No, traffic worked out, everything, everyone followed the detour route fine, so it's no issues at all.
I heard a lot of positive feedback, people just commenting to me about what a good time they had, how much they enjoyed it, I mean, we really lucked out on the weather, so, you know, this kind of stuff wouldn't happen without, you know, John and Mike and the police department, you guys did a great job, I forgot anybody, I'm sorry, but, yeah, it was, it was a good weekend, and that was it, that was our last big event, I think, until light-up night.
Turkey trot?
Pardon me? Oh, turkey trot, yeah, but that's...
Turkey trot.
You got, they got that down, you got that down to the left, how did the run go?
The run went well, we didn't get as many walk-ups as we did last year, so, you know, it's Don Allen and Jerry, so, on, you meet with me, you just never know.
Yeah, I heard that foam run was really fun.
Yeah, I wasn't around.
Did you do it?
No.
You're shaking your head back there, did you do it?
My daughter ran.
Did she?
Yeah, they were running around the playground.
And then John, they said...
We set the ladder truck up out here and had the shower.
That's what I heard.
So, they were running, that, that kind of, everybody had a good time.
Yeah, I heard that was a lot of fun.
Much better than the powder.
Yeah, yeah, the powder bash, yeah. Well, good work, everybody. Council, anything for, anything else? All right, we'll see you all in the second week of September, what's the date, September 11? September 11. September 11. 11th, September 11th.